Five o'clock, we'll call the meeting of orders. Uh, so they pulled the right board. Meeting here, um. If all board members except for Jake present, uh, maybe here later, we're trying to find out, so, um, move forward. The additions to the agenda.
Yep, uh, you will notice a handful of additions to the agenda. We had some contracts come in, um, and then there's a couple of items that, um, one I'll, I'll talk through when I, I get to the consent agenda. I missed a, I missed a typo in the, um, AD contract. Um, you'll also notice some of the, um, I did put out the, um, budget staff proposal yesterday as well, so that's been added in, um, as a link in a resource, but otherwise, we just received the signed contracts between the time that the, the agenda went out and, um, and today.
Good. I'm looking for approval agenda.
A motion, make a motion.
I have a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Bruce, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no, carried.
Jake is on his way, by the way.
He's on his way, alright, okay. Uh, public comment, we've got no, uh, forms for public comment. Uh, we'll move on to consent agenda then.
Um, so there are a number of, um, consent agenda items. You'll see the minutes from February twenty second, March eighth. Um, special meeting with the bond sale and then the work session. Um, Cheryl, there you are, I had to look for you, where you were at. Do you wanna go over the, uh, bills and bill information?
Um, nothing jumped out at me, um, pretty much everything is paid for, from, from the construction. Maybe a few odds and ends coming in yet, but pretty much covered.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I talked to them about the leaks that were still.
Yep.
Having and it sounds like they're trying to keep them under control until warmer weather so that they can do a permanent fix.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, nothing, nothing new.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the personnel items that you will see identified, we have a number of resignations. Um, the most probably, uh, substantial one I wanna call out is Rick Hendrickson's halftime, um, fired position. Because as we move into the new hire contracts, you will see Rick Hendrickson, um, has been offered the activities director contract. Um, I would like to just kind of speak to his contract a little bit because I, I didn't identify, um, that I had a typo in there and I'll let you know where that'll, I'll know where that came from. Um, so when I was the executive director, uh, from La Cico, we had a number of administrative positions that were non-union positions. They were, um, at-will, but yet they held administrative duties and so, um, when that organization went through, um, some structural, um, analysis and had some position work done with, through the pay equity study that I had talked about, uh, last, uh, our last work session. We also, um, developed some new contracts from that and so the language that you saw in the structure is for an administrative at-will agreement and so that's why, um, and I did, I missed the language of special education in one of them. It was an alternative, uh, special education, alternative site specialist. Talk about a wandering, um, flow of words, but so that's where that came from. The other piece that I just want to, um, and I talked with the, so the four, four of the board members in various, um, components have heard this and so I, I, but I, I do wanna share it with the rest of you because, um, one of the things that the board committee, um, when they conducted the activities director interviews, um, every candidate was asked why they wanna be the next activities director for the Paines Valeria schools. And, um, and I thought it was really, um, telling and to be honest with you, this is what I've seen in Rick as he, um, walks through our halls. Um, he talked about a mentor of his that he has worked with, um, who, who, who uses kind of the mantra, the motto, the, um, it's, it, this is his approach and it is eye to eye. It is heart to heart, hand to hand and face to face. And when you watch Rick walk through the hallways, he's making eye contact with kids. He knows the kids' names. He makes a, it's a handshake, it's a high five. It is, um, he is heart to heart. He knows that the kids care. The kids know that he cares and I think that that is just what he emulates and, and he brought that to, um, to that discussion. So, I just wanted to share that with you, um, because it was, um, I think the, the committee, it was one of the things that was the most genuine that stood out for, for us, so I just wanted to pass that along. Um, otherwise you will notice there are a, uh, flop of a resignation between, uh, um, Mr. Peepenberg and Ben Moser for the softball position. So otherwise that's, those are the key items I wanted to call out on the consent agenda.
Donations?
Thank you, again, cheapers, I put them on a different spot. So, um, on the donations, there's a couple of things. I have received from, some feedback and we are likely going to change this process in the future, um, just to the way in which we, um, call out the information. But you will see three different categories. We've received dollars for scholars, um, donations. Uh, we've received a donation for a trumpet, um, and then the Donna Aron's memorial, I wanna call that out a little bit specifically because, um, this is something that is a little bit new to us as a school district where, um, we have been a, a preferred memorial for, uh, um, in lieu of flowers. Um, there is memorials made to the Paines Valeria schools and so, um, that is, I think that's a pretty special honor and I think it's important for us to, to recognize. So you will see, um, some Donna Aron's memorials coming through, um, over the course of, um, over the course of the next few meetings, I would presume. Yes, for me?
And those are undesigned, is that right?
Um.
For.
I need to look at them a little bit more closely because I think, I think she did have a, an intended purpose.
She did.
Yes, and I, I think.
So Donna or had already, or the family had designated.
I believe so. Um, I, I, I've had a couple of different conversations with people over the course of, I'm gonna look into that to confirm, Rick. But they are, they, as they've been coming through, they are designated as the family had identified.
Yeah.
Yep, that is correct.
Um, do you recall if that designation is gender specific or?
Um, they, to my.
Student specific or to a certain group?
That's, I don't remember if it's activities or if it was just to the school district as a whole, so that's, but it was not to a specific boys' basketball, girls' basketball, anything like that. It was, it, it was general. Um, again, I've had two different conversations with families about this over the, which is kind of odd. That it's new, but, um, I'll look at it a little more closely. But it, it did not raise any concern from an equity perspective when they're coming in.
That was my question.
Yep, they are not designated.
Thank you.
Yep. And then there is the, um, you also see the Teal's Market rebate program, which is wonderful that we get, uh, a percentage back from Teal's purchases. So, thank you to Teal's.
Alright, looking for motion approved, send agenda as presented.
So what?
You got a motion from Cheryl?
Second.
Second from Megan, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no, carried. Communication items, now back to you.
Okay, so I linked in, uh, um, an administrative report that I want to, um, and I thought, I, I'm putting it on here so that, one of the things I know we talk a little bit about is how people from the public can see the information um, that we're kind of looking at together, so I thought by linking it in, people will have an opportunity to, to see the, um, information that I'm sharing with you. So first and foremost, I just want to, um, identify, this is, um, this is information that was used to make the staffing projections. But, um, this is information I'm gonna start sharing out with the board more frequently. Um, and it is kind of the, um, the enrollment to date. It's the year-to-date of our, um, and I'll make it a little bit bigger for those of us that, um, need it, a little bit larger. Um, so you will see this has a, um, a, a grade level report. Um, and it starts on the fifteenth of September and then it's the first and the fifteenth of each month, okay? You'll notice that if it's a green, it's an increase and if it's a red, it's a decrease. So I think part of the value in taking a look at this is to see the mobility and fluctuations throughout the course of the year. Um, but then this is the data that we use to, as we build our section projections for next year, okay? So again, this, I will share this information with you and bring it forward, um, and we're gonna be reviewing this more frequently um, because I think this is good information, just to kind of see and, and track longitudinally. Uh, one thing I do wanna remind you of is that when you look at the peer numbers, um, that does not equate to the funding that we get because of the weighting of students. So just as, just a reminder that, um, the bodies, that, that nine hundred and twenty-three bodies does not equate to staffing, um, from our funding perspective at nine hundred and twenty-three, okay? So that's the only, and that's some of what these footnotes are, is just a reminder about, um, how the calculations take place, okay? So that's just a little bit of a reminder about that, okay? So again, just a, a little overview and you can see our, our adds and our ups and our downs. It's really pretty, um, there's ones and twos. They're not, they're not large fluctuations, which is really good. Um, but, because those large fluctuations make classes much more difficult and especially in the elementary when they are on a bubble and they have a couple of kiddos move in. That can be pretty stressful in a classroom, uh, when you add a couple of kids in there, so, uh, we certainly do try to keep an eye on that. Any questions about that?
Well, it looks good if we went from nine oh two to nine twenty-three without looking at all the rest of it. That's very positive.
Yep.
Yep. Uh, so then the next thing I wanna just share with you is, um, yeah, I'm gonna pull back our strategic plan tracker. So most specifically, I wanna try, draw your attention to the tab, um, with today's date. So, um, I did add a column off to the far right that our items incorporated and integrated so that we don't forget about the things. I know we talked a little bit at one of our last meetings about how do we keep track of those areas and those items. Um, and so that's where I just, I slid them off to the side, um, just as a place for us to remember, okay? You'll also notice that there is, um, there, I have one new item on the items and exploration, so if you, I kinda like this actually, if you click on the first tab and then go to the next tab, you see the color changes. I like that visually, so, um, the reason I did that is so that you can see what, what are new and what are changes, okay? So, um, one thing that I do think is important is as we're looking at budget and how we're communicating about our needs, um, is being a little bit more, um, looking at the, the way in which we communicate, whether it's revenues and expenditures. So, I'm exploring different methodologies that other boards and other superintendents use to communicate budget items that, that maybe will provide a little bit more understanding of our ins and outs and the flow. Because I do know as we go into our, um, our, um, planning for the operating referendum, a lot of question comes into play about, you know, what are bonds used for and, and why can't we take the money that was used to build for the building? So really trying to think of how we communicate around our budget. And so, um, that is an area that I have put into exploration because I think that that does feed into, um, the fiscal responsibility that we have to our public as well. You will also see that, uh, culture, climate work has moved, has moved on. Um, I think there's two pieces in there. The Minnesota Student Survey was administered this week. Um, that, that is the same survey that's done every three years. Um, and there's targeted grade levels and the communication went out and we, and I'm certain that families received that information. Uh, we did have some families that, that opted out, so I'm, I'm, I'm certain that that communication went forward. And then the other thing that I think is important is, uh, with that culture and climate work, we do continue to have some districts focus on staff culture and climate as well. Um, so I, I put that on there just as a side note, um, to make sure that we are maintaining that focus as well. And then you will see, uh, moved into the implementation, I have the PBIS system-wide. So, uh, the middle school is looking at, um, that application was submitted. Um, and so just as a reminder, PBIS is the Positive Behavior Intervention Support System, which is kind of the, the multi-tiered systems of support for behavior um, and, and social emotional learning. That is, um, we oftentimes talk about the multi-tiered systems of support and intervention for our academics with our, um, like our letters, the letters training that has been a really heavy, uh, work through the elementary. That's one of those, um, strategic areas where we've really done system-wide analysis. The PBIS system-wide is, again, it's going to be the base intervention that we can provide for all students with positive behavior intervention supports and that is moving to implementation. The other area I wanna call out is in implementation is we have the social media usage data. Um, so we kinda looked at January as our baseline. There we go. Um, and you will see that, uh, LinkedIn here is just kind of all of our, um, the majority of our, um, social media sites. The one doc, or the one communication item that we're trying to really understand the best way to capture the data is the smore newsletter that goes out to families because there's not a real clean way to get a snapshot of, um, the interactions and the data. Um, so we're, we're continuing to look at that, but we used January as the baseline for us to take a look at. So you'll see like our, um, the, the pages of our website that are visited, so I'll just pull that one up. You'll see, um, for the most part, I'll make this a little bit bigger as well. Um, our homepage is thirty-one point seven percent of visits, different departments is thirty-five point three percent. News and announcements, so this just kinda gives you a snapshot of where people are, are going when they land on our webpage, okay? Um. Additionally, you'll look at our, our YouTube stats. Um, so again, this is just kind of a, you see the chart. Um, and Matt Dickhausen has shared a lot of this data with you in the past, but this is a, a snapshot that we'll, we'll continue to track, okay? Um, and then you'll have your, um, a little bit further down the breakdown of, of the top viewed for that one, okay? So those are some of the things that are happening from the strategic plan perspective that I wanted to provide you an update on. Are there any questions for me?
Did the last one say that one of the top views was that, um, fish os?
Um, in January it was, yep, in January it was. Yeah.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
I have two questions. One is about the Minnesota Student Survey.
Okay.
I can't remember, when do we get that back? It's on June, um, and then are we gonna look at the last time, because it's every three years?
Mm-hmm.
And kind of, and compare, like where are we seeing maybe improvements or not?
Yep, I think that, that, I think that makes a lot of sense to do considering we have it from three years ago, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
And then my question about the strategic plan itself is, how was the admin team looking at this unbalancing? Like, or what is the, the goal balancing between, um, the goals?
So what, one of the things that, especially now that we're looking at, um, having discussions around, um, where to reduce cost is we are coming to the strategic plan pretty, pretty consistently. Um, and, and as I mentioned, um, we are aligning the, some of our expenditures with a copy of the strategic plan so that we can have that as a driving force. Um, because it is, there might be something that if it aligns and it's part of the plan, it would be maintained whereas we would look at something else differently. So, um, the, in the admin meetings, we consistently come back and reference. We don't reference the tracking sheet, we reference the, the strategic plan itself.
So the budget kind of drives it more so than, that's what you're saying? We don't have many initiatives for goal number one, or we're lacking in goal number two, like, the, or is it just based off of the things?
No, so, these, yeah, so there are things, this is, this is just a snapshot. This is not, um, we are certainly not, these are not the only things that we're working on, for sure. Yeah, and so when we come back and, um, at our, at our, um, at our next meeting, I'll pull up our finance one so that you can kinda see how we're looking at, um, for example, if there is a, um, so seven mindsets, for example, that's goal one. Uh, how much money is currently allocated to seven mindsets and is that something that we have flexibility in? How much staff time is allocated toward, do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So Maggie, those are the ways that we're trying to look at it to make sure that, that the work that, um, the financial discussions that are taking place maintain, are maintaining the work that the district has kind of laid forward, yeah.
So this is just a summary sheet anyway?
This is just a summary sheet and this is.
We still have the other, the other format that you guys put all the separate stuff on it, right?
Yep, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna click right up here, um, maybe?
Just to the left there.
Oh, to the left?
Yeah, it goes, it's open right there.
Oh, it's right there, cheapers creepers. Oh my gosh, getting old. That's, that makes me super sad. Um, but yes, so we, we consistently come back to this document and we take a look at, at those areas, for sure.
I like the summary sheet.
Yeah.
Some of this is more detailed for you guys, maybe we look at it once in a while, but the summary sheet just tells us in a short period of time.
Yeah.
Where we're headed.
So as a, as a, for instance, what I, what I did is I added a column to each of these and so we are then looking at where are they fund, where is it being funded from? Is, did it come from a grant funding? Was it part of our, is it coming out of the general fund? Is it part of, was it part of, um, S R funding, you know, where did it come from? And then, so we've added a column for that and then also taking a look for each of these items and I just used the seven mindsets as an example. Um, but then also like the time to plan, connect time and SEL lessons. How much, did we allocate enough time? Does it take more time than we expected, having some of those types of discussions?
I do have one question. With the culture and climate, with us really looking at more of not only the students, but the employees and everybody. Are we sending out a questionnaire for that too, or how are we getting how our teachers are feeling in the culture and climate for them?
Yep, so, um, the, the certified staff went through, um, the, so there was the World Cafe model.
Yep.
That, um, uh, that was facilitated externally.
Okay.
Um, and they, she has provided kind of a summary of, of areas of concern, areas that we can, so that will come back to the Culture and Climate Committee and then that will help to drive those next steps. Um, one, something that has originated from that and that, um, is kind of in the works, it's maybe a little premature to get too far out, but, um, is some collaboration with, um, Centra Care and Stearns County who are looking at how they can help to support, not, and it's not specific to only Paines Valeria schools, but the Paines Valeria community. Um, as we have, um, families who have experienced a lot of, um, through COVID, they experienced a lot of loss. They experienced a lot of change in routine. There was a multitude of issues that have come in to, um, impact the, the functioning of our families. So, um, they have presented some ideas and thoughts to try to partner as well that will also go through the committee.
I thought, I don't know if anybody else went to this, it was not this year's, I forget which year's, where Duluth had a presentation on, at the, did you go to that one?
Yeah.
Okay, where they had a great partnership with, I think it was their local hospitals and a couple organizations where they, I mean, it was true collaboration, they had shared documents, like, one of the things is the school's information for like something medical is different than the hospital, so they, they made sure that those all match just to make processes easier. I'll try to look for it, but it was, it, I thought it was an impressive partnership where they truly were involved. It wasn't like, here's some resources. It was an integrated effort.
Sure.
I think they partnered with St. Louis County Health at the same time.
Maybe that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it Duluth Public?
I think so, yeah.
Nothing else, you'll reach out to Duluth.
A few years ago, right?
Yeah.
No, it's the twenty-twentieth.
I don't know what year, I'm not sure what.
Connect those dots, if you can't find them. It's been a few years.
I know, but I don't know what year it is.
It was last year, good luck finding it.
It was in person, so it wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, that nervousness.
That was a few years back.
Then you might just wanna reach out to the.
I can just reach out to the Duluth superintendent.
I probably actually have notes on it somewhere. I'm certain that.
I should, yep. Alright.
Um, student representative, Kennedy?
Um, so for NHS, we're doing that Connect for Love. It was supposed to be conferences, but that all did not work out. So we're gonna go the second week of April and we're gonna each go in little shifts to the elementary school during their media time. So it can be organized by classes, so it's not gonna be a big mess. Um, student council, we're doing the food drive right now and we're having awards for like daily winners, trying to get people to participate in that. Um, for SAB, we just went to the second graders last week and did a fun, um, St. Patrick's Day. They, we printed out pictures of their face and put them on little leprechauns and they really liked that. Um, there's a speech conference meet tonight, that's where Alyssa is. Hopefully they do good. Uh, track and field, are they're having their, um, a meet this week, I think, this Thursday.
Thursday night.
Yep. And then softball and baseball practices are starting up, which is exciting. I think that's pretty much it.
Alright, sounds good.
I have a question about, for like high schoolers who go to the elementary school. If somebody doesn't have a car or transportation, is that prohibiting students from being able to go or is that?
If people find rides?
What we do for most of SAB, what we do is we send out a spreadsheet and we put, drive and how many seats and who can't drive.
Okay. That's cool.
So then we just kinda all ride together. So like last, I didn't, there, there was no need for me to drive separate, so we all just kinda drove separately. That's what we usually do.
That's good. I was just like, are the students who don't have transportation and they get left behind?
No.
They're more organized than we think.
I know.
Great, thank you. Pretty resourceful.
Yeah. And then the community organization reports, any, uh, kind of, much community activity this last month?
We had a West Central Ed meeting and it was very standard. We actually, um, did it Zoom because it was, there was, we approved the policies. There was a second reading, um, what else, I mean, there wasn't.
Just a couple of personnel.
Right.
Um, consent, but that was, policies were the biggest.
Yep.
I sit on the district wide tech committee and I think there'll be some stuff, information come out from that, uh, Colin gave an awesome presentation, some work that's going on, some good things going on, he's probably gonna bring in that
Yep.
to the board and one of the board meetings in the future here, so I'm excited for that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna spoil that story.
It's no spoiler alert.
Alright, have one old business, but nothing, move on to new business.
Um, nothing, nothing this month, yep.
Well, new business, A twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget information.
So, as I mentioned in my administrative report, the data that we reviewed really is what drives, um, this recommended, um, staffing proposal. And you'll see that, um, what I'm recommending, um, in collaboration with administration is, um, a, a consistent, um, section ratio and staffing. So you'll see, um, the numbers that are, are here were driven, they were taken from the data that I shared with you. Um, and then, um, the number of, um, kindergarten roundup, that's what is expected to be sent, okay? So, um, that would be what I would recommend for our staffing for, as we continue to develop the budget for next year.
I have a question for, it looks like for second grade, there are very similar numbers, but different. If I'm reading it correctly, or no, I was looking at.
Yep, so, yep, a couple of years ago, um, fourth grade, uh, there were four sections at seventy-two. Um, you know, what, and I think in, in dialogue and discussion, kind of what I'm, I've, I've heard that consideration is that K one-two when they're larger sections like that, um, that's where that four would come in. When they get a little bit older, it's easier to have. Um, but those early levels are, are more difficult to have, which is part of why you see four sections of kindergarten at, you know, that seventy-six, seventy-five recommendation. So it's to keep those early levels, um, smaller class sizes. Does this pretty much keep our staffing intact? Correct.
So what does it look like right now? We have nine hundred and twenty-three students. And this year it says, you have eight ninety-three.
So we.
It's on eight ninety-three?
So actually that's, this is gonna be based on nine oh four, um, and it was eight ninety-three. So, the, remember the, the data that you looked at earlier, Bruce, is?
That says twenty-two, twenty-three.
Are you thinking about the, um, the spreadsheet that I showed you, um, with the bodies?
Just a little bit ago, yeah, so we are in twenty-one, twenty-two, correct?
We're, we're currently.
So we're in the middle column, you have eight ninety-three.
Yep.
We started this year with nine oh four, right?
Nope, this, the nine oh four is this is.
Is where we.
Recommended.
But if you go back to the other chart, I thought it started at nine forty, nine oh four and it grew, we grew to a nine twenty-three.
So, so you want me to go back to the?
So where, yeah, where do those two numbers coming from?
I think you're right, Bruce, on that one.
Let me go back to the enrollment data. Nine oh two and nine oh eight, is that?
I'm just wondering where the numbers came from.
Yep.
So, this one is twenty-one, twenty-two, correct?
So this one includes preschool, so we have to take twenty kids out, because twenty kids are included in preschool.
Okay.
Okay. That's the discrepancy.
So they count for funding, but they don't count in the.
But you took, you're taking eleven kids out where you started this thing, right?
So, so this, so if you come back to, so here, number, so if you look at, um, if you look at first grade, this sixty-eight is coming from. if you look at first grade, this sixty-eight is coming from.
This current curse, or this current kindergarten, right?
Correct. Which should be your your H K and K.
Yeah.
But I'm more interested in this year, right in the middle of the chart. To go back to that other chart, it's right in the middle, it says twenty-one, twenty-two, eight hundred and ninety-three is where you started, today we have nine twenty.
This was, this was what was used to recommend sections from last year, Bruce. This isn't where we, this was the the data that is consistent, that has been used year over year for recommendations. So this is not, this is when you set sections and the staffing for for this year. This is the data that was used to recommend the sections for this year. So what we. So this was, this was reviewed in March of last year, this is the data from March of last year, this is not our current data.
Okay, so the twenty-twenty-two is what you're calling, well, your projection is based upon current data?
And that's, so so the these columns right here, Bruce, the twenty-two, twenty-three and student numbers. That, those projections for the start of next school year are based on this spreadsheet that I shared with you. That is our current enrollment.
So the cutoff date for pulling these numbers is now?
It's it's where.
Even though we're budgeting this for.
Yeah.
July first.
Right.
Why isn't it active?
Well, it is, but we have to have a target.
When we're looking at making budget cuts and I'm trying to be careful of the budget and that says nine oh four. If the student population goes up between now and then and it looks like it may, it does that number move at all?
Then then we would have to come back and review and revise the budget, so so that's, and that's one of the areas where like if we would have a significant decline and let's say for some reason, some, let's let's say we ended up with fifty kids in kindergarten. And we ended up with a big sack, uh we wouldn't need four teachers for fifty kids. We would take a look at how would we redistribute, does that mean we would cut a kindergarten teacher at the beginning of the year? Absolutely not. But would it mean that that if we had, let's say we had a hundred kids enrolling kindergarten? Are we gonna run a hundred kids with four teachers? Absolutely not. We're gonna have to come back and add to that recommendation, to that budget. So then the, then I would be bringing a proposal to add staff based on an enrollment changes. So the reason I included these columns so that you could, cause this is the, this is how the budget has been developed in the past. Is based on these numbers that have come at about this time of year, reviewing the current data to make a projection for next year. That's, it it's a snapshot moment in time. And then if there's a significant change in the fall or i- in early August, if there would be some dramatic change that we would have, then we're gonna come back and we're gonna look at that differently.
Well, the the number of students in here make a huge difference on what our budget looks like.
Absolutely, it does.
Another twenty kids?
Absolutely, it does.
Some of our our stress would go away.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So.
Yep. You bet. You bet.
Thanks. Can we, and I know this looks great for now, but can we in any way make sure that we keep an eye on the second grade and the fourth grade?
That's what I was thinking too, right?
Yeah.
Because if we go up and if those numbers go up, we're already at twenty-five kids and twenty-three kids.
We're right at. Yeah. Yep, absolutely. Mm-hmm.
So those are my two classes that concern, those numbers concerning me.
You'd be able to do it, so thank you.
Absolutely, we certainly, and I think that's part of the benefit of of reviewing um this enrollment data a little bit more regularly. Cause I think that helps you as a board to see where we're where we're seeing kids move in and um what that fluidity is between um each of the months, yep.
And it might be interesting, cause I get this, this is a snapshot, we have to budget off of like what we're guessing for next year. But it'd be interesting to see the comparative data on what actually happened.
For like the start of the school year, well.
But you know, at the end, or it would be, yeah, cause you'd probably have to do it by the start of the school year or maybe end, cause sometimes there is fluctuation.
Mm-hmm.
Um where we've had to add.
Well, we can, and and honestly, we can do that right here, um so if we look at, let me move this over. So, okay, here's where I wish I had my split screen. So if we, so we can look at kindergarten, we projected and budgeted, or we sent out um okay, now I'm gonna go to the right tab here. Um we projected for budgeting uh seventy-five, well, it was seventy-five kindergarten roundup, kindergarten roundup invitations, I think that were sent. Um as as of last spring, okay? And when you come back to um, when you come back to the chart, we ended up, starting on the fifteenth of September. We had so we had fifty-six, we had sixty-six kids start. Okay? So first graders, we had seventy, and if somebody has the chart that they can pull it up, so I don't have to go back and forth.
Yeah, it was sixty-seven.
So first grade was sixty-seven and on the first, on September fifteenth, then it was seventy.
Second grade was sixty-four.
And the second grade started at sixty-one.
Uh third grade seventy-one.
Um third grade project, uh start of for the fifteenth was seventy-two.
Fourth grade was fifty-four.
Start the fifteenth was fifty-seven.
Fifth grade was fifty-eight.
And start was sixty-one. So I mean, kind of, so.
Is it that really close, actually?
So you can look at it and you can see how they compare, yep.
Yeah, I just think we need to keep an eye on those.
No, I, yep, I agree, yeah, certainly.
And what is that point?
Um honestly, I what, and there was a couple of points this year where there were a couple of of um heavy move-ins that there was discussion of of what's that moment in time. Um I I think it's I I don't know that I have a magic answer right this moment to say that it's this number. Or it is this, um I think there are certainly um, there are are classroom dynamics that can play a difference. Um and if you have students that are, um if you have a lot of students that have a lot of significant needs or if you have some students that are are um um maybe more of a high high flyer, like a more of a gifted type of a scenario, you have different clusters of kids. Um you know, some of that, I think I would also, I would also look to um our interventionists that are, what are they providing and how is that working? Um I know that administration, that Mary has a lot of conversation with teachers about how are things going? That's part of where I got the pulse this fall, there's some, been some move-ins that are, you know, we we're on a bubble. What do we do, what do we do next, you know, cause there was, I think it was, um I think it was uh third grade, um.
This year's third grade.
Third grade had move-ins and then um kindergarten had move-ins early.
Heads.
Yep.
Well, and I know this year's third grade previously had had four sections every year. And then this year went down to three sections, cause they're the largest class size we have right now.
Okay. Sure, so, yeah, looking at in twenty, in twenty twenty-one, they were recommended at three sections, twenty-one, twenty-two was three sections. So maybe it was the year before.
No, it's the second grade, the twenty twenty-one second grade.
Oh.
Was seventy-two.
Oh, the class size, I'm sorry, oh, you're talking about that class, that class year, I got you, I'm sorry, no, I get you.
Yes. That class. Yeah.
Yeah, and there, and that was um a discussion point, you know, again, um as they get upper level, you
Mm-hmm.
typically are gonna have more per grade level, those primary K one two, you try to keep them less. Um again, is it, is it a magic science? No, I don't think so, um but I think you continue, you start here and then to Bruce's point, if we have a a dramatic change, we'll come back and and I'll bring you a different, a different discussion point or recommendation. Okay?
Questions on that? That wannabe school calendar.
Okay. So uh the school calendar, we've had um multiple meetings about the school calendar, um and it has gone through meet and confer as well.
That was one of our committee meetings, like.
Oh shit, yes, we did, yeah, we had a meet and confer committee meeting. So um there was a couple of points that have come across that I I just wanna call out as we look at this. Um um, okay, so Megan, I see your point, so part of that October date is because there is not another in-service uh date to do um the letters training and, cause there's one per month, so it would either be before or after, I suppose.
So. Couldn't, couldn't we do it on the twenty-fourth then instead? To then make a longer weekend instead of, okay, now we have four, three days off. And then it, you know, we have those two Fridays in a row, give the families, okay, now we have Wednesday or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Um I can bring it back, I don't know, I mean, is there other discussion? I I, we tried to keep with consistent, the calendar from year to year is where we tried to keep it. So I think, and maybe um I can look at what last year's was, I think this was in.
I know this, this past year it was, because that was, we're like another Friday. Or now, and we gotta figure, you know, and so, and I know that parents had said to me, it would've been really nice to just have it on so then we could've gone somewhere longer or.
Could that be a question for the survey? We're asking about class sizes and stuff, ask them how, what they think of our calendar.
Um, yeah, I think, I think we need to probably.
Like us to group days off together or leave it as is?
So the committee did, the committee did receive feedback that that their families appreciated having it, the days off on Fridays or Mondays for planning purposes. Um and and so I, you know, that was incorporated and you'll see there's a couple of days, for example, in November, the end of the quarter is on Tuesday or on Tuesday, November eighth, but the end, the quarter break day isn't until that Friday. Again, you know, trying to take that into account. Um you know, I certainly can, can bring it back to the committee and 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 have that discussion. Um I I don't, I'd like to, if I, I'm not, I'm not thinking of anything off the top of my head as to why we couldn't make that change, but I I don't, I certainly wanna come back and vet that with the group again.
Yeah, no, I I get that, I just.
Yep.
Think that it would be easier for families to have a longer M E A break instead of, okay, we had M E A and now.
Okay. And that Friday.
That fall, that Friday that way.
I agree with that notion that not only my household, but other households, you get that question all the time, like another Friday?
Sure.
Like we just had last Friday off and two Fridays ago, we had that Friday off.
Yeah.
It just kinda seemed like it, it like, yeah, every other week we had a Friday off.
Yeah, so. So let me just reframe why we have these days off, okay? So when we brought the um the letters initiative into the elementary, um there was a commitment to have concerted time, effort and energy for them to practice and train. And it actually is, it's, it is intentional that if there's about one per month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that was, so I I, and I recognize that it it it's, it does feel that way, but that was the intent behind it is to have that professional development for half the time and then half the time is um is the the teacher's work time. So that's where those those came from, you know, as the calendar was developed last year.
So it's less questioning on why as much as knowing that anything's happened.
It feels, yeah, yeah, yeah. So another, another area of um of discussion that uh did come into play was um and I'll just call out December and January. So you will notice that um on last year's calendar, December twenty-second would have been um the uh flex day or, so the, our our certified staff have the opportunity of doing um a professional, a kind of a professional development that's of their choice. They set their goals and they put in their hours outside and they document those hours and then they, that can be a flex day for them. So that would've been the twenty-second of December, but um there was some question as to whether or not that could be moved because um New Year's Day is Sunday and many families will observe um New Year's Day on February second. So the recommendation came through the staff to move that to the flex day from the twenty-second to the second, which would allow kids and families to have that Monday off. And then the staff would have that as a flex day instead of being in school on the twenty-second or being off on the twenty-second.
I think that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that was another area that was kind of called out. Um you will notice that um there are, there is the window. So we did, uh David Orline sent the survey uh to secondary families about um their preference of um the conference format. Um we did receive some nice feedback about ways in which communication is going forward. Um trying to be a little bit more strategic about the day of communicating versus having multiple people communicating multiple ways. Um so there's some good um feedback, how to make it better, but it, there was still support to keep it as a as flexible calendar day for that secondary. Um so that's why you'll see it built that way. Um there is some really good discussion taking place about how, you know, is that something that could be explored um at the elementary? Is it something that they would have interest in um having some flexibility as well? So there's some discussion taking place about that too, but that's why you'll see the calendar proposed the way that it is.
And it seemed that way in the committee that most of the teachers wanted it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Cause they said they can get more done than during that day and have it spread out. And so it just, it gave them more concentrated time.
And a lot of the elementary teachers also said, even though they had set conferences, they still had conferences on other days for parents that couldn't make it on the set day.
Right. Yep, right.
So they were spread out anyway.
Yep.
So there was a lot of discussion on that.
Yep. So um what I can do is um in order to, I, what I'm seeing is is there's really kind of the one conceptual day in October to discuss. I do know that um people are really looking for our first day of school, spring break time, you know, so um I would like to get this back for approval early um at the April meeting if possible. Um but I can send it back to the committee and see if there's any reason that I'm, that I'm not thinking of that we couldn't move that. But otherwise, I I hear what families are saying there too, if that's just too much, I'll, but I'll check in and see if there's something I'm missing. Okay? So then that will stay informational and there will be no action today.
We're gonna go to survey preview.
Alright, so at your spots, um and I I really debated whether to post this or not. And the reason I didn't is because, like I said, and and as you'll notice, there are some errors in here, this is.
You have to go back, Thomas.
You should.
So this is, this is entirely a draft.
You were here to begin the meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, so this is entirely a draft, but I think the 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 key pieces that I wanna walk through are the concepts of. And and I'd like to do this, um so most importantly, you also have a kind of a time, a a timetable that you're gonna take a look at, so our timing on this is we will review this today. And then um I have a meeting with um with the dude from uh School Perceptions. Rob is his name, um so I have a meeting with Rob and then um he'll take the recommendations or any suggestions that we have. Um again, he's hired to write the survey, so if we have ideas that are not going to be reflected well in a survey, he's gonna tell us, I don't think you're gonna like, you know, he's gonna, we hire him to implement it, right? Um it'll come back to your table again on April twelfth. On April twelfth, I will post it so that it can be reviewed kind of publicly, so people can see it as well. But again, again, because there are some, this is very much draft format, I wanted for us to just have this work on it. You'll see that April, April thirteenth, it'll get sent out to a outside proofer. Um by April twentieth, um the survey will get emailed to staff, April twenty-seventh, land in mailboxes. Um and then you'll see that the window is open from about April twenty-seventh to May sixteenth, okay? Um the timeline then is um in early May, um we will, um I'm sorry, early June, we'll review the data. And from there, um that will help us to make the decision about where we go with the information for the referendum, um which we need to have finalized and determined mid-July. Because that's the, because of the way that our July board meeting falls, we have one in July. Um because of the way that falls and the timeline, we have to make the determination in July if, for the language that goes to a referendum vote, okay? Otherwise, we get too far out um beyond the required statutory timeline.
So this is the first time I saw this, but I'm just, a a quick note, we're talking about the referendum of a half million dollars?
Yep.
That was last year.
So which page are you on? Can we just, can we go through? So which page are you on? Can we just, can we go through it page by page? Cause I, I'd like to go through it.
Ahead of myself.
Yep, let's just go through it together so that we can all kind of take a look at it. So the first section is really highlighting things that, that are, um, are strong for our district. You'll notice we talked about our elementary reading program, we talked about our college and the schools classes, and we talked about our CTE programming. So those are a couple of the, and, and again, trying to keep it concise, but yet also calling out the things that I, I know that our, our district has done really well, okay? Um, the, the highlighted um, federal relief, I don't believe that belongs there because we didn't really use um, the um, our ESR funds weren't really used to supplement staffing. They weren't used to supplement, they were used to, um, technology was replaced, which was wonderful. Um, but the bulk of that was used as um, the indoor air quality project, which is helping to keep costs down for our taxpayers anyways. And that is referenced a little bit later. So I would recommend that that second, that section, that highlighted yellow section is just removed, okay?
So you do want, do you want questions as we go or questions?
Sure, questions as we go.
So I think that career and technical ed, CTE, CTE needs to disappear and write it out so somebody knows what it is. Or you can abbreviate college and the schools to CS and nobody's gonna know what that is either.
Well, it just said our career and technical ed and then in parentheses CTE, so to me, I read that as, that's what CTE means.
So are you saying, are you?
I guess that would work, maybe capitalized.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Capitalized.
Yep, yeah, okay, can do. And I, I hear what you're saying. I, there's a lot of people that in our community, they know what CTE is, but there's a population that doesn't, so it's kind of.
The people that have to vote for it aren't floating in the circles that most of us are floating.
Sure, okay, all right. Um, and then it, uh, then it moves into kind of the directions of the survey. Um, you will notice that there are, um, where we will incorporate the dates of the board meetings and we'll put the website on there so that they know who to contact. And then obviously, all the board information will be correct when it goes forward. And I, I didn't, yeah, we'll fix that, okay? So taking a look at the second page. So the purpose here is um, to help to define and educate again on the difference between a levy and a bond. So really, um, the, and, and the, the five hundred thousand dollars is, it's rounded intentionally to just not be too specific um, based on what it was last year. So again, the intent of what a levy is used for is part of that definition. And then the next one, the bond, is identifying what the voters approved and what that was used for. Is this where you felt like there was question, Bruce, that you wanted to have some additional discussion or clarity?
Well, here's the thing, when we determined what we needed, it was last year. That was based upon the bond money coming in one year earlier than it is. Now it's not coming in one year earlier than it is, and we're also using reserve fund right now. Um, anybody I asked about it, they always asked me what's gonna be if it doesn't pass. I said, well, if it doesn't pass, we just have to work, but it's gonna come up again, but it's gonna be higher. There's no way that it can be five hundred anymore. It's probably gonna have to be six or six fifty because we've lost a whole year in this thing and that money's gonna have to come out of the reserve fund to move forward. And I'm remiss giving this information to you. I just didn't know what I was looking for. But it's like, we need to look at that. What did, so we had a sheet where we determined how we were gonna do it. It was an Excel sheet. Should be able to pop it up, but that was incorporated with all the numbers of projections. That one year.
So I think, I think something that um, that we wanna be really mindful of and, and, and I, the question was posed to me, um, why are you, you know, help, and, and again, so this is a third party, hasn't, has, knows nothing about our school district, knows nothing about, just does, does this for a living, right? Um, asked the question, your voters said no to five hundred and thirty-one dollars, why are you not reducing your dollars? And my response was, because our needs haven't changed. I mean, our, our, our needs are what they are, um, but his experience, he cautioned, he said, I, I've, I think you're gonna need to really understand from your community what they'll support, right? And so maybe to, to your point, Bruce, I hear what you're saying is like, we need to, like, if we need to ask for more, we should ask for more. But I, I'm, I'm a little cautious on how we um.
Add another question and ask them.
Okay.
Cause the issue is that we are just gonna set ourselves up so some board, seven years down the road, it's gonna be flat out of money because we didn't adjust. And we can ask the public, last year we had five hundred, we believe that that's not going to be enough because that was planned the money that would've come this year. Now it needs to be six fifty or whatever it is.
Okay, so let's provide an opportunity.
So yeah, the question I think comes down to, we're giving them one option here.
Correct.
Um, if we come back with probably no to the majority, we can still go forward and ask for less, knowing that we're probably not gonna get what we're asked for. So the question is, what do we put on here to start with? I guess, what Bruce is saying.
Yeah.
Do we start a little higher, saying this is what we really need, and then if they say no, then okay, we'll have to decrease it. Or we go out and try it anyway, but it'll be.
But I don't know what that number looks like. It could be, a lot of that was put together without us. We saw the last.
Sure.
Last charts. Well, may, maybe it's five hundred and fifty-seven thousand or I just know it's not gonna be five hundred because it was gonna come a year earlier.
I, I hear what you, I do hear what you're saying. I'm, um, I, and I think, I, I will ask them about the way in which we can ask that question, what makes sense to determine, would you, and, and, and we can frame it with our, now we've done, we've had another year where we didn't receive the funding that was expected and we've tapped into our, our fund balance or, we have tapped into the fund balance to pay for. So would you support? I, I, I will ask that question. Um, in my communication with Carrie, uh, her, her target, when we sat down and looked, she didn't, we didn't have a mass, a massive, we gotta reset this and change this. I hear what you're saying. It was another year and we certainly pull that back. Um, but I, I wanna be, I think to, we have to also be mindful about, we've not had a lot of discussion. Uh, as you, as we get further into this, you're going to see, we're gonna start talking about areas that we would be reducing. Cause I think that's, that becomes part of, if people really, if I don't support this, what happens? And I know that's been a concern or something we've talked about as a, as a, when we've had a conversation here. I have heard you all say, we don't really want, we're not interested in a threat.
Right.
Perspective. Um, however, one of the things that, that they pointed out to me in this conversation is frequently they see until P, they'll say, no, I'm not gonna do anything that increases my taxes until they see, oh, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose any of these things, so then, yeah, I guess I probably would. Do you know what I'm saying?
I think it's really important to do that actually because the voters can see right in front of them the consequences of not passing this. I mean, I understand, like the last time, we didn't wanna do that, but I think it was a mistake because they didn't see what was gonna happen. And as a consequence, I don't think they took it maybe as seriously as they would've before with the data right there.
Well, yeah, we'll get to that page, but I think that's different than putting it right out there, oh, if we don't get this money, this will go, this will go, this will go.
Sure. But.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Saying that, we're saying.
Could we take this survey potentially and pick some random community members to read it and say, what do you understand and not understand? Because I do think a lot of these terms, what it is, is confusing. It's confusing to a lot of people, like, what does, you know, five hundred and thirty-one mean?
Mm-hmm.
And potentially in the email, I know it says a lot extra, um, could there be a link, like you want to understand more? And maybe you're, you know, on a video saying, this is what this means and showing the chart of.
This is what this is, defining.
Just because that's what I hear is from people is, they don't know the difference. And I want people to read this and be very clear, like, this is what this means.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe people will read that and, and feel that way, but.
Sure.
I would like to know what a few people.
That say.
Don't have the background, sure.
Right.
So the other thing is, um, they, they want us to be very mindful of if we get too many pages, the, the, the likelihood of people completing the survey also diminishes greatly.
Now, I have a question on this page about the projected tax impact.
Yep.
Um, and this is such a hard thing to get across to people. If this doesn't pass, our taxes are gonna go down, right?
Correct.
So actually, is there a tax impact, even though it says it on the ballot, there will be an increase?
Mm-hmm.
Is this accurate that, that with this amount, that's how much your taxes are actually gonna go up? I thought there was a, a break even for it.
So our current, our current operating, so it, right now it's thirty-nine dollars and some odd cents per pupil. So this eighty-three dollars would, would be on, so the, the, the thirty-nine dollars is, um, and I didn't print it from Ellers, but this is projected, so Rick, if it, at the end of this year, the thirty-nine dollars goes away. So now you're gonna have a decrease, right? So that, that's gonna go down. And then this five hundred and thirty-one goes on top of the decrease.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a split, so it goes down and up.
I'm just confused because when we passed the last one, since that happened, the state came in, stepped in and took over from that.
With the local, yeah, well, yes, so there is the local operating, yes.
So compared to where we were last time.
It, correct.
There is a decrease in some way.
Right, Ellers has that chart where it shows with the red and green.
Yeah, yeah, we have that chart that shows that it's gonna.
Yep, so, so from a, from a survey perspective, so we're, we're getting kind of weedy in like some of the details. So from a, from a survey perspective, do you feel it's important for, for our, for our people that are taking a survey to know like, okay, whatever dollar amount we land on, and I hear what you're saying, that's not, if it's six hundred and fifty dollars, if it's five thirty-one, that they see what that tax impact is? Do you think that's important to have in the survey?
But I get where Rick's saying that it would be, I think, helpful for people to see that, well, okay, so right now I'm paying X amount of dollars and then it won't be on top of that, it will replace that so that it's not.
It's not going up.
They're not looking at it as in, okay, it's gonna go up a whole five hundred and thirty-one dollars. No, it's only really gonna go up X amount of dollars from where we currently are at with your current taxes.
So I will.
Does that make sense?
I will ask them to clarify.
Zach, I know where you are.
We discussed this before, that this is gonna be a very sticky, grainy area to get across to people.
Yeah, well, and I think to kind of show them that.
We want, we don't want them to come back later and say, oh, you didn't really tell me the truth.
Yeah.
But now you have, so this is, this is purely, this is not, they're not voting on this. This is conceptual.
Right.
And this is, if I, if I have a, a home that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, my tax impact would be approximately a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Per year.
So that's per year. So that's really the, the concept here that we're, and I, I agree with you. When we get to the, like, the, the rubber hitting the road, we're gonna have some education to do on, what does this look like? So we have things like the, the, the board authorized local operating authorities. So that's, we have, that's now different. It looks different on the tax statement than it did the last levy that was approved. So I, absolutely, we've got education to do. But I think from a, from a, just a gist of the information that we're trying to understand, if you feel like that's gonna be too confusing, I can ask them other ways that they feel like they can reflect that, but I think that our voters, I feel like they're gonna say, I need to have an idea of what this would approximately cost or I can't make an educated decision.
I think people care about what it costs and what happens.
Yep.
If not, like, if, if we're here, then what happens?
Yep.
So that they can evaluate.
One, one thing, I, I, I guess I confirm and agree with what Janelle's saying is, and much like we did the last survey for the uh facility, we didn't, you know, again, we didn't have this confusing, some tax dollars would go away, some were gonna come in. But it, the survey is just a generalized survey, define where we can start feeling our support. And then post-survey is where we do the education to tell people, now you're gonna go to vote, this is what our survey said, you know, we, we feel the survey said we could be in support and this is what's happening, tax dollars, why, and what, and the what, and who, where, when, why. Again, uh, you make this document a lot of extra, now you're getting into conversations that are just, should be passed the survey, half the survey.
The only thing is, when you put it, you're sealing up that number. When it comes out in the survey at five hundred, you're not gonna go out and ask for five fifty.
Right.
You're not gonna go ask for six hundred.
I agree with you there.
You're sealing at five hundred. Can I go back to a comment you made about Carrie? She wasn't concerned about it. So if she wasn't concerned about it, it would say to the taxpayer that we didn't need the money last year.
So I think, I, I think the question that, the question that I would say, or the comment I would add is, we knew that last year was not, it was not critical.
But did we ask for too much last year and five hundred what we needed really for this year? But then when I go to the financial statement and I look at what we're using out of our reserve fund, haven't we used like two or three hundred thousand dollars out of the reserve fund?
Yep.
Okay, it's not, it's something wrong in that.
So this would've brought us in five hundred thousand dollars and we used two, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand or a hundred and ninety-four thousand. I, I should not throw numbers out without looking at.
No, but we're talking about a, a concept here. You're kind of sealing ourselves up with, with a specific, a specific number.
Yes, and I, I also think.
If we think five hundred's good enough, I would look at that. If I was on the other fence of this, I'd say, well, looks like to me, they asked for too much last year. Well, do they know what they're asking for this year?
Well, and I think, I also think we have to be mindful of the fact that they told us, no, this is not so. We, when you, many boards, they do have to approach then, so, okay, we'll do for less, but then here's the con, here's what we'll do for less. You know, we'll reduce these areas, we'll do it for less, you've told us no, then we'll come back and we'll do it for less, but this is the consequence of doing it for less.
If, that argument then Bruce would say, I, I, I think we asked for the right amount last year. Um, there was a lot of research done, you know, by, by, by Matt and, and um, the financial team last year to say five hundred thousand dollars is what we need moving forward. That's a ten-year projection.
That's a lot.
That, that's, that's not, cause it, to your argument, we turn around and say, okay, we're gonna ask for that five hundred thousand dollars last year and we got it last year, but two years from now, we're gonna go back to taxpayer and say, oh, that wasn't enough, cause now things are down. So that notion of saying five hundred thousand's not enough now is saying that we didn't do our due diligence last year, thinking that five hundred thousand a year wasn't good, you know, you see what I'm saying there? That's.
You, you, reasonably, I'd look at it, think that we'd be going to ask for something over the top of that. Or at least print it here.
Yep.
If they say no, then we just have to react, we'll have to react accordingly. But if we go back and ask for exactly the same number, well, I think I agree with uh Thomas there that I understood they did a lot of, a lot of work on this thing. So what we got at the end was this, a small Excel sheet.
Yeah.
That, that you could work with and you could run numbers on it to see where we're at. My impression was, that was for last year.
That was for the next ten years.
For, yeah, for ten years.
That was our protection, what we need for the next ten years, not what we needed last year and now this year, we need more.
Is it true where fund balance would be based off of this past or not?
Yeah.
That charter would say.
That would, that would be across the next ten years and making sure that we're not in the hole ten years from now.
Right.
We're gonna be super above for the first how many years, but uh, the projects going ten years, we're coming exactly, making sure we're not in the hole.
A ten year, correct. Yes.
So to turn around and say that's numbers significantly different now, you know, are significantly higher now than what it would've been last year, we would have to see a huge reduction in student population or something else to, to make me want to turn around and say, we need that number higher, but.
So I will review, I'll pull that, I'll find the spreadsheet that you're talking about. Um, I'm sure I have it, cause it's, everything is in my, I mean, I'm sure I have it. So I will find that spreadsheet that you're talking about and I'll bring it back to, um, for us. I, we may have to, um, coming back to the timeline, um, if it's going to be markedly different, I'm gonna need to pull you guys together, cause I can't, I mean, if that's, if that's the scenario. But, um, cause if, in order to get the information that we need in the timeline, I did not get a sense when we started this conversation that there was gonna be a dramatic ask to do something more or different because of kind of the tenor and the feeling that we gotta just figure out why our community didn't support, where is this coming from? I did not get a sense that the board was gonna come back and ask for a, for a significant increase in, in the, the referendum ask. So um, I, I can bring it back, but I did.
It never came up, but if you simply look at it, if we were gonna do it last year for five hundred, that was gonna last us for ten years. Now we're gonna do it this year and it's gonna last us two years. Now we're gonna do it this year and it's gonna last us to year eleven, we don't know exactly where we would be at for all year eleven. But technically, we've lost half a million dollars, but obviously make this five fifty. Just from simple terms, but lots of things have changed, we're no different than anybody in the public, none of our costs have gone down.
No.
Um, the inflation that everybody sees is the same inflation we're seeing in everything we got going on here.
So I'll pull the, I'll pull the information and it, and if I need to do, if I need to pull us together, we'll post it and we'll figure out how to get pulled together. But, um, we'll need to do that before, uh, before the April twelfth meeting.
Then maybe run the numbers and it's all fine.
Okay.
Yep, that's possibly, I just.
Yep.
I just don't see it here, I.
I think for the survey, when we did it last time, I don't, was it in a Google Doc? I remember we had like a place where we could put in our suggestions or edit it, and then that was kind of brought in together, or maybe we just emailed that back. I, I felt like it was a Google Doc.
Okay.
Um, because I don't know that it's gonna be that drastic from what. What this is, um. I think a lot of these things are, like, what is the stage, like, how fast is a, and who is that marketing communication committee? To say, okay, those are the things we need to address, how are we gonna, you know, start to share that information and educate people?
Yep.
Because it goes fast, I mean, summer's gonna come and all of a sudden it's gonna be fall.
Correct.
And I wanna make sure we have time, the other question comment is, um, for Spanish speaking families. Is it saying to call the office?
Um, so I am going to communicate, um, I've got a communication, um, about the best methodology. Cuz he gave me like three or four different options on how to get our information out to our Spanish speaking families.
Okay.
Um, so I've got like, so that's one of the discussion points.
Okay, cuz I was just, if they do need to call in and they're a Spanish speaking family. Would it be easier if they could? Be directed to something online or something versus having to call? I don't know, I don't, a lot of people don't like to call. So I, I just wanna make sure it's as easy as possible.
Yep.
And maybe that's in the email part of it, where you can click right away that we have a version of this.
Yep.
And they don't have to ask for it, that.
Yep.
You are, inner community, that's the language you speak.
The trouble in giving one by mail, right?
Yeah.
What would it take, another paragraph or few sentences in Spanish to tell people? If they don't have internet and they don't have all this stuff they're used to.
No, they're, they'll get the.
That's something I would tell them specifically, call here, we'll get this form out to you in Spanish.
So there's, there's a couple of ways that, as I, as I, I have like three or four different options. To get this information into the hands of our Spanish speaking families.
Okay.
In a methodology that will allow them an opportunity to participate. Some of that is, is do we wanna have, how do we wanna use our internal person, how do we want that to be done externally? And that I've not vetted out yet, cuz that was.
I just didn't want it to feel like.
Yep.
They have to do something different or.
Yeah.
Cuz I think they should, there should be equity in, in information.
Yes.
So, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Okay?
Yeah, I just have one last comment on this page then. Um. I think the most important question, at least for me, is, would you support this? The bottom of the page there, ever since.
Yes.
Uh, that's the one I'm gonna look at, it'll depend on, you know, which, where they fit in the other part, but. That, uh, to me should, I would want them to take into consideration all the things that we put on here. But we put it in a box with the tax impact. So right away, my eye goes to the tax impact, oh, that's what's gonna cost me, well, should I support this or not? It's almost like, I don't know, I'm just.
It should go around another page with the questions.
So again, so we've hired, they have done this numerous times over.
Yep.
So this is, and, and so I.
Maybe that's right, I just.
I will raise the concern, but I really am gonna, I really, I feel like we need to trust the judgment of the surveyists that we. That we're hiring to do, where does it make the most sense? Cuz what, in my di- dialogue and discussion with him, oftentimes what happens is. On the paper ones that are returned, that you will see a, a mark, they'll say, no, and then they'll go to the next page. Which is the cost cutting options, and they look at those and they come up and change it.
Yep.
Okay, so again, I, I, I hear, I, I, I made a note, should we move this?
Yep.
Is there a place, a better place for this?
It's just that we'll put it in one box and it's, that's close, in my eyes anyway.
Yep.
Not nothing.
So, yep. Okay? So then the next page is, is, so these again are areas that, um, part of the reason why I, I again did not post this as a, this. Cuz these are not things that we have yet talked about, so I did not want to put these out as a, here's what it's going to happen. These are areas that were, that are often utilized in surveys to help understand, because then as a board, I think you also have the opportunity. When this information comes back, to know where does our community feel like we can make reductions or changes, okay? So you'll notice, um, so the class sizes, um, those, that data will come strictly purely from our, from our census. Um, so right now, our, our smallest classes are about twenty, and our biggest classes are about twenty five, okay? Um, you'll notice the, the course offerings, we, um, we have advanced placement courses, we have career prep, we have courses for college credits. You know, those are, so that's an area of discussion. Um, curriculum, um, our plan calls for major resources updating in a variety of content areas to continually improve teaching and learning. Is that an area where they, where they feel like that, okay, we don't need that? Transportation, um, could reduce or eliminate, um, bus routes requiring students to be picked up earlier, further increasing ride times for some riders. Eliminating busing services for others, that's where it would be, um, it'd come into play for our walkers, when we have, um. Is that an area that, that people would take a look at? The athletic co-curricular offerings, the district offers a number of athletic and co-curricular offerings, is that an area where people feel like we don't need to have? We don't, there's costs there that can be saved. Technology, this is highlighted because I don't believe that's pertinent in this survey. Because we have a capital levy that really addresses our technology needs, that we are going to come back to, and you'll notice that was in that second page. Where it talks about in twenty nineteen, voters approved a capital project levy that expires in twenty twenty four. I think that statement should be removed because that's, that's dependent on the tech levy. Okay?
The one thing. Like, when this comes back, what will this tell us, cuz I don't imagine. I hope parents wouldn't check no on curriculum, course offerings, things like that, so how is it gonna tell us a rank order, like priorities? Like what are those main buckets? Cuz I think most of them will come back, yes, what does that tell us?
Oh, sure.
So like, how do we, how do we weigh what's important?
The other thing that was just out here, yeah. If, if I was doing this, I know a lot of people would say, oh, well, we can get rid of sports, cuz that. But when technically that's such a small percent, it's not gonna make any difference, and people don't even understand that, that if we really have to make a five hundred thousand dollar cuts. We already have a pretty good idea where it's gonna have to start.
Cuz that helped in the last survey really weigh and prioritize, I mean, we use that priority, prioritization.
The, like a rank ordering?
Yeah.
Okay?
So I wanted to come back and tell us something.
Okay?
We're not going to do another survey when we have our technology levy.
I don't think so.
I would like to leave that technology in there then. It's just informational, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay?
I don't know what anybody else thinks.
I had that super hot.
I have, yeah, I.
I, I actually thought the questions looked fairly good.
Okay, yes. Mm-hmm, I agree.
You want it simple enough so people are filling it out, it's gonna give us an idea of the different parts of our system, of what they like and.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I.
And thank you.
I do catch what you, I think you were saying there, um, I, I like the question, I think the question should stay too, but I do catch what you're saying too. We turn around and say, in this question, you know, if this doesn't pass, technology is possibly for something to cut. You know, but in two years, we're gonna come ask you for a tech levy too. So regardless of this pass or not, we're gonna come back and ask you for a tech levy anyways, you know, or if this does pass and we're still gonna, the people will say, well, what the heck, I thought.
The other, the other piece is that if we make a reduction in the technology portion, that doesn't affect the general fund right now.
Mm-hmm.
Because those are paid for out of, out of the tech levy.
Yep.
So, so you don't have that.
That makes sense.
Which will inevitably go away.
Could we.
So it's something else to think about.
Could we put it, instead of under cost cutting options, could we put it somewhere else of? How, I mean, how important do you feel the technology, you know, or they know how to word it better than we do. But kind of put it separate, but yet still on there?
Mm-hmm, so.
So we can get information on it, but not put it as something that.
At the same time, we may decide to have the tech levy added on to our referendum in the fall.
Right, so his recommendation is if, um, and, and that's a question, I think, to, um. Is if we're gonna, if we're gonna run the tech referendum in the fall, it should be referenced here that it's going to be on there. And I, I, we've got a couple of years for that, um. I think, eh, eh, if we, when we think about the language that goes into the operating referendum. I think there's a couple of things to be thinking of is, one is whether or not to, you'll notice that we, in years past, we have indexed. Um, for the, or on the last, um, referendum, we indexed with inflation. Um, that might be an option to ask as a yes or a no, um, to provide some question clarity. Um, I think there's. Because our operating referendum really is our priority, I don't know that we wanna run the risk of, of having. That be a no, cuz we, we wouldn't, it would have to be like a yes, a, a one would have to pass in order for two, cuz one is the priority over the two. Do you know what I'm saying? So I, I think.
I'm not opposed to running the second survey. I think hearing from the public, um.
In, in two years.
Two years or whatever. Yeah, a year and a half.
I'm not, I'm not worried about that, I, I think you provided enough information here to give people information that otherwise is kind of difficult for us. Everybody's gonna get in their mailbox, we know where they're at, so this all goes through, we get the referendum and it passes, now we're dealing with something else. I think we, we learned a pathway when we did the survey for that construction project.
So what is the, what is the consensus on the technology question?
Finding a way to, finding a way to vet it out elsewhere or? By, my opinion is, hearing all what everybody's saying, now I am leaning towards putting it, not including it, because I agree with Bruce. We send another survey, I think it's good practice to be sending surveys more frequently than not, so we're continually having kind of a pulse, so I'm. We can do it at that time if we decide we're not gonna.
Okay?
I agree.
Go this year.
Okay, sounds good.
What is everybody else, is everybody okay with that?
And then also.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the other thing is, is that may come out on the bottom, it's, it says, are there other cost saving measures the district should consider, and if so, what are they? Um, that is an opportunity for people to provide.
In text, okay.
Yep, and they'll be able to, um, and then one of the things that, that we did ask for is for them to, um. To summarize all that, all that information, all that data, so that'll be helpful.
When I get to the bottom of the second page, it says comments, questions and suggestions, I'm assuming they're gonna move that somewhere, so it looks like there's some space. For people to fill something out.
Okay, yep, yep, I will make that note.
Right down, cuz where I'm interested in what people have to say, there could be somebody in our community, they're eighty years old, they were active with this, they saw something cool. They read it down, it, just to cover, not here actively involved, doesn't mean they don't have good ideas out there.
Yep, no, and I, I'll make a note of a couple of those, some of these, again, this is super draft, so I don't know where that falls, but I made a note to make sure that we have that. I raised that to them, just like the checkbox of, is, is that the best placement of the question, so, okay?
I'm gonna add one more about the question.
Okay?
I like the no opinion on there. Um, because that's again, an opportunity for most of the people that are gonna have to say yes for this to pass. What are they gonna, they may not know what our curriculum is. They may, they may not, no opinion gives them the ability to feel like they're part of it. And I don't remember exactly how we set it up with the weighted scale on the last survey. But that, that part of a, an answer, I think is great for people that aren't active.
All right.
And he said that, um, if we wanted five hundred, we should have asked for seven hundred or something, so that we could come down in the next referendum. I hope our community doesn't think we're playing those kinds of games, we asked for what we thought we needed.
No, he didn't, he didn't suggest that, he said, his question was, your community said no, why are you not reevaluating your ask? It wasn't, it was not that it was a high to a low, it was, it was, has the, what is the rationale? And I said, because our, our, our needs haven't changed, our change, our programming has not, we've not reduced programming, we've, we've, the board has made a concerted determination. To maintain programming, so that's why the ask has not changed, so that, it was not a high to a low in that regard. It was what has made the board consider not reducing your ask. Okay, that was what, what that was.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. The next page is demographic information, uh, you'll see age, um, you'll see primary residents. Um, uh, just the munis- municipalities are highlighted, just to make sure we didn't miss anybody. He took it off of, um, the. He took it off of a county, a, a, a site, so let's just do a quick once over and make sure we haven't missed anything.
I just guess I had to raise the issue, why do we need that?
Was, I would assume it was on the last one?
It wasn't, I don't know, I just, what township, I, we find one township is more in favor or not, or, I don't know. There might be some reason, or it'd be valuable in the end, but I.
Okay?
Voters, voters.
You're right.
Right, so. Um, it does, and then there's a, it says, do not live in the district, we already asked that up above, so definitely.
I would say, in, in, in general, overall, uh, data collection, it's, it's commonplace to kind of have some of that type of, you know, non-demographic, demographic information available. Does it really make a difference in the outcome of the survey or the vote, not really, um, and so I, I can see taken away, but I think just a, a survey, a data collection. End of things, you, you kind of try to collect as much as you can on that.
Sure.
Well, only if we're gonna use it, cuz if we're collecting it, we're not actually using it for something, then.
Correct. Correct.
And it's.
Thank you.
So if, if we needed to add other questions, I would remove that as a space, it takes up a lot of space anyway.
Yep, um, the, is your primary residence in the Paines Village School District, so that will go, that's there because of the lake homes. And because of, um, because we have, um, this would go to every voter.
That makes sense.
So that's why that question is in there. Um, and then, uh, the other, the other demographic information is just information that, that is pretty standard in their surveys that have gone out. Um, I did, instead of, um, we did not have any private parochial schools, so I added online virtual. Because I think that's also important, to see if we have any online voters that feel strongly one way or another.
My favorite is overall satisfaction. In a short area, that is really, cuts right to exactly what we're wanting, what do, what do people generally think of what's going on here?
Yep, high quality education, public informed, managing funds and building pride, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the four. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will give this, this feedback to, um, the survey writer, and then, um, I will also get going on the, um, analysis of the numbers. And, um, I'll get that back to you guys, um, pretty quickly, and we'll. We need to come back and meet again, if it's, if it's not markedly different. Um, I, I feel like it would be wise for the board to stick with where you were versus increasing it if it was even ten, fifteen dollars. I think we can, we need to be fiscally responsible with that, cuz I also feel like, um, it's confusing for. We said no, and now we're saying you're asking for more, I think it's a, it's, it would add to the complexity of our, of the education, I think.
Even a theory, if you're correct, you know, that we should be asking for more. We have to, like, understand what is gonna make a voter more inclined to vote yes.
I got it.
Are they gonna look at it, like, that would be my fear, is they're gonna look at it, we said no, and now you're increasing it, without context.
Yeah.
But I get what you're saying, it's fun, like.
Yeah, it, it must be a kind of a interesting one, cuz when we got on the board, the referendum that passed just before I got on the board, was based on averages. Of what the districts round were. Well, guess what? What was it, Cheryl, maybe year two, three, four and five, maybe even six years, many of us sitting there remember that. We didn't have any money at all, all we were doing is cutting, every time somebody retired, it was gone.
Yeah.
Um, because we had no money to replace anybody, and. Um, because we had no money to replace anybody and it was ugly.
Right.
And I think there's a lot to be said, and one of the questions in here, what is it? Um, managing funds appropriately, is managing funds appropriately to be clear and transparent that really we might need five twenty-five or five fifty to make this work, cuz now it's a year later.
Sure, so if, and, and perhaps if that's, if that's really what, what is determined, perhaps we can put that in a narrative somewhere to say, you know, through analysis, this is the dollar amount that would be necessary to maintain for ten years. Uh, I hear what you're saying, I do, I, I absolutely understand where you're, where you're coming from. I also, um, I also recall in, from what, and, and I, I just remember watching the board meetings that were, you had prior, cuz that was obviously prior to me. But, um, the discussion of knowing that, that this year, this fall really is critical. This is our critical point and we went out last year in hopes, and I think part of that was in hopes of, um.
Timing, depending on.
The, with the, the operating, opening the new, the new facility, having really positive interactions, having really positive, um, I, people were excited about that new facility, so I think that was part of the decision around going out last year. So I, 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 I don't think that we're going to be super far off, but I will, I will look, Bruce, I absolutely will.
We're asking them, just a survey.
Sure.
They're gonna tell us.
Yep.
I, I know there's people gonna be sitting there, well, I don't know of anybody that I talked to that, I told everybody I expected it to be more. I mean, I fall off the bus yesterday, I don't have anything in my whole life that's ever gone down.
Right.
The, as the years go by.
So there's my, my information about the school receptions for you.
Uh, any other questions or discussion?
I'm glad we did spend time at this, cuz this is important, I mean, this, this is a pulse.
Yeah.
Yep.
Wanna make sure that we're asking the right questions and conveying the right, you know, sharing the right information.
Yep, absolutely, and I'm glad we went, went through it page by page so that we all have a, an opportunity to have discussion about it. Thank you.
Review upcoming meetings.
So I just wanna point out to you, um, last year at this time, the insurance committee meeting was identified at, um, at this board meeting. We do have a health insurance committee meeting coming up on April fifth. Our rates are, we have a max cap, so it cannot go above, so we know what the, what the absolute, and it, it's not a substantial increase, it's minor. However, um, board members were not present at that last year, but I put it on there because it was on last year's meeting. So I just am putting that out there cuz I, I'm not honestly entirely sure if somebody was there or thought they, cuz I do.
I don't ever recall it, so.
Okay, well then.
I was understanding they didn't want us there.
Well, I, I think it's like unnecessary right now.
I was there before, but it was so much removed from what we were.
Right.
Dealing with.
It's a manager.
My understanding isn't even honest there necessarily.
Okay, well that's, so that's why it was on there, okay? Um, otherwise you can see the other areas identified, upcoming meetings.
Anybody see any errors or additions to that? With none, I'll look for votes to adjourn.
Vote to now adjourn.
Vote from Jake.
Second.
Second from Megan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the guy?
Aye.
Will say no, Carrie.